If I could, I'd like to call the Jackson County Board of Commissioners meeting to order for Tuesday night, July 20th, 2021. Please all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and then the invocation led by Commissioner Daniel Mahoney.
Gracious and wonderful Father, we come to you tonight, or I come to you tonight, with so many heavy things to bring before you, God, and we just want to start by just thanking you, thanking you for grace, thanking you for mercy, thanking you for the opportunity to serve. Just want to ask for some special provision over the Shawwell family and also the five families in Michigan Center. And also, I would be remiss if I did not mention the innocent bystanders who are continuously suffering from the gun violence in our community. Lord, we just ask that you clear our minds, purify our hearts this evening as we come before this board and this commission to take care of the business of the county, Lord. We ask that you just help us make the right decisions and continue to guide our decisions and keep us, and that's pretty much it, Lord. You know the thoughts that are on our heart, and we just again thank you for your grace and mercy. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Bear?
Present.
Commissioner Walls?
Here.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Present.
Commissioner Duckham?
Here.
Commissioner Pulaski?
Here.
Commissioner Mahoney?
Present.
Commissioner Williams?
Present.
Commissioner Snell?
Here.
Chairman Shawwell?
Here.
All present.
Entertain a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Support? We have a motion and support. Any items for correction, removal, additions? Seeing or hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, duly carried. Any communications or petitions to come to the Board of Commissioners, please step forward and give them to the clerk. Seeing none, we have no special order or public hearings. At this time, we've arrived at the first opportunity for public comment. Public comment guidelines, each individual will state their name, you have three minutes to address the board, you may only address the board once under this public comment opportunity and may not yield your time to others. Board members will not debate or answer questions at this time. This is the first opportunity for public comment.
Good evening, my name is Rosemary Tanner, I'm a citizen of the city of Jackson, and I just have a few points I would like to reinforce here. The purpose of law enforcement is to protect all citizens by the laws we as citizens agree upon. Police aren't special social service workers, they're not babysitters, their only purpose is to enforce the law. One of the societal issues that we have is teaching people to respect people of authority. It seems to be lacking in some areas. I need my tax money to protect all of us, not just a few, but all of us. So I urge you to vote yes to support the sheriff's office in their position for getting three correctional officers in the jail. Thank you.
Marcy Jankovic, Summit Township, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I want to support the sheriff in adding the deputies for corrections. We know we have a gun violence problem in Jackson County, but actually, it's not guns that are committing violence, it's criminals. So we need to get the criminals off the streets, and if we're going to do that, then we need to have a place to put them, and we need to have people to guard them. So I support having the sheriff's proposal granted. Thank you.
I didn't have anything planned, but I was at last night's township meeting, and Commissioner Snell said you guys didn't have much of an agenda tonight, so I was like, oh, okay, I'll just do something, but it does look like you have quite a bit. But I did want to say, if I would have been better organized, that I am for any time we are encouraging our police force, and I thank you for those who are ready to support that. I am so sorry for those who want to stand against it and all those that are behind the scenes that are disrespecting our authority, and that's what's being taught in the schools too, is we're teaching our children to disrespect authority, and we're teaching our children that there's no consequences for crimes. People get off crimes with a slap on the wrist a lot of times, and if there's any way that we can change that, I'm all for that. And I don't even know if our county would be responsible for, but if we could come up with programs that teach our children those things, and to teach them how to be good workers and have good character, so they can have good jobs and stop the crime. There's so many solutions, positive solutions, to changing the hate and the problems and the violence and all that stuff, so thank you for those that do support that and can come up with ideas for that, and thank you so much.
Hi, my name is Paul Hoagley, I'm from Spray Harbor Township. First of all, thank you all Commissioners for what you all do. I know this is extra time away from your families and you're not able to be home tonight, but I just wanted to stand up here tonight and just let you know that I'm in support of adding the extra corrections officers for the sheriff's department, and I'm hoping that all of you will see that same position and just be a support for our sheriff. Thank you.
Tim Golden, Grasslake Charter Township, and I'd too like to thank all you guys for your service to the county, I know it's a heavy load you bear sometimes and I appreciate it. And I would like to also ask that you support the sheriff's request for three more deputies. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Julian Anastasiades, Blackman Township, and I am in full support of giving the sheriff's department additional correction officers. Thank you.
Good evening, thank you for your service. I'm Susie Howe, I'm a resident of Summit Township, a retiree of Jackson County Circuit Court, many years ago. I support the legal department, of course, and the sheriff's department, and I think we need lots of safety, especially for the elderly and the vulnerable communities. Thank you.
My name's Mary Crocker, and I'm a resident of the city of Jackson, and I also support the addition of three positions for the sheriff's department. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Public comment is now closed. We have no special meetings or standing committees this evening. Entertain a motion to approve the amendments of the June 15th, 2021 General Board of Commissioners meeting.
So moves.
We have a motion and support. We got two. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried. We've arrived at the consent agenda. Need a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Support. I have a motion and support. Any items for removal? For discussion at a later time. Commissioner Mahoney.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I did not hear what item that was, could you repeat that?
Item 9C is sheriff's corrections deputy positions. Yes, so it becomes 13A. Standing Committee, Public Safety and Transportation. Any other items for removal for further discussion? Seeing or hearing none, Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll or post the vote, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair, just post the vote.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Should be appearing on your computers, Commissioners. Standing Committee, Public Safety and Transportation chaired by Vice Chairman Corey Kennedy. Commissioner Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We'll have item number 13A, Sheriff's Corrections and Deputies Position. I'd be looking for a motion to approve the sheriff's recommendation.
Support. Do you have, anyone want to?
Discussion?
Want to have discussion, or Phil? Okay, we'll go Phil first and then you, sir. Yes, sir.
Yes, I fully support the sheriff and what he's doing in the city, and if we can start catching some of these shooters, we got to have a place to put them. And we want the right number of people out there, so our deputies that are at the jail are safe, and actually, the rest of the prisoners are safe too. For the life of me, I can't figure how anybody could vote no against this endangering our deputies' lives, and I'd like to thank the people that come forward and spoke on behalf of this, and thank you very much for your support of the sheriff's office and the county. Thank you much.
Commissioner Mahoney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, just a couple of questions just regarding the financial portion of this. The three, four FTEs would cost $213,915, saying that it's going to be covered by the $224,000 from tax revenue with the marijuana sales and distribution. I'm just curious if that's a sustainable way to really try to fund this, knowing the budget constraints that we faced.
Administrator Overton?
Frankly, it's the only monies that we have available to do that. I think it's fitting that the revenue generated from marijuana sales would go to support law enforcement efforts. And if the amount of people buying marijuana is any indication, we should have funding for years to come, sadly. Personal opinion.
Okay, I have a follow-up question. I definitely don't have any problem with adding what the sheriff needs, nor have I ever had a problem supporting the sheriff's department, and my voting record will reflect that. So I'm just curious, Mr. Overton, if there should be a shortfall, what is the plan for covering that cost?
If there's a shortfall, it'll come out of the general fund, dollars.
Okay, no further questions from me, thank you.
Questor Bear?
Yeah, I was pleased to see in this proposal that the funding was coming from the marijuana profits. Unfortunately, I don't see that that funding source is ever going to go away, so that to me appears to be a perpetual source of funds, and I think this is an excellent way to spend those funds. As a result, it costs taxpayers nothing out of their tax dollars.
Minister Snell?
Thank you, Minister Chair. I'd like to say I appreciate everybody who came tonight to support this, it's a necessary expense for the county, it's one of our core responsibilities is public safety for the community, and I will be supporting this.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I have a question, piggybacking off of Commissioner Mahoney's line of questioning, I'm just curious to, annually, what does the marijuana funds bring in?
Roughly $225,000.
So are we expecting the, follow-up question, are we expecting the same positions, that number amount to cost the same generally?
My thought would be, as Chair, was that we would move the marijuana money into the general fund, as we did this last time, and reserve it after the administrator, the sheriff's department, and other department heads have returned to us a 2022 budget that is balanced and shows responsibility, that we're able to find the money elsewhere within the budget, and we will work to make sure that we always have a balanced budget, and that if we do have surplus dollars, they can be held in reserve, similar to the marijuana money is to be used as a stopgap or an emergency situation, similar to this.
Okay.
That would be my personal take on it, in the direction that I would hope we as Commissioners would be looking to do, directing the Administrator Controller's Office to come back with a balanced budget with a mild reserve, and we have that available to plug gaps and holes throughout the year, as we have using the marijuana money here. I want to thank the sheriff and his undersheriff for presenting this item and being willing to work with us on a budget going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, nothing further.
Mr. Kennedy?
Couple points, and I think one will bring a little comfort to individuals concerned about the budget, because I'm always concerned about fiscal matters too, but I would point out that the revenues are probably going to exceed last year's, because what's happened is, if I'm not mistaken, the majority of those were from Leoni Township, which was the upstart of the marijuana businesses, and we've now seen the city of Jackson, Parma, and I believe another community that also now has dispensaries, and that's where that tax is generated off, it's generated off the excise tax that these places charge. So the more share of dispensaries that Jackson County has, the more revenue we're going to have come in, and that's the positive thing of having these in our communities. So I do not expect a budget shortfall in the near future unless the state were to change the rules, which is always possible. The second point is, the reason these three individuals are so needed is because of COVID, the courts have been shut down, there's a backlog of cases, so the jail is going to fill up exceptionally fast, much faster than normal, from what the sheriff told us in his report. Not to mention everybody that's been watching things, we see we've got some highly violent people in our community, and when they're put behind bars, we want our sheriff's department to be adequately staffed, so I hope that everybody on this board is supportive of this. Thank you.
Commissioner Mahoney?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and again, I definitely trust our sheriff's judgment on the matter, and I'm in support of this, I just do have additional concerns about the longevity of being able to fund it this way, because while we may be adding additional marijuana facilities, which in theory means more revenue coming from those marijuana facilities, the fact of the matter is, what that means is sales will spread out, I don't necessarily think that means they're going to increase, I think that means that people who were going to Michigan Center, people who were going to the city of Jackson, will now have their own marijuana facility that they can go to. I don't think that necessarily means an increase in revenue that we'll see. Again, I'm going to support this, but I do have some concerns, I just want, just clarification on if there's any additional cost above what's stated in here, does this include benefits in all of those additional costs as well?
From what was explained in committee, yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Yes. Commissioner Mahoney took advantage of a second round, are there any other Commissioners who would like to make a second comment? Commissioner Duckham?
Yeah, I'd like to, they are pleased I am, that Mr. Mahoney has changed his tack from last year when he wanted to defund the sheriff's department, and he sees the value that we have here.
Is his mic on?
And will support that. Yeah? We're going to all support that now, that's great for our city and county. Thank you.
Any other Commissioners? Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, respectfully request a roll call vote on the matter. Thank you.
Any other Commissioner Walls?
If I, if I remember correctly, I think the sheriff's department has had a number of retirees and things where I would suspect that most of this additional cost would be due to attrition. I think once it gets all shook out, that's about, that would be my thoughts on it. I'm fully supportive of it.
Any other Commissioner comments? Any other Commissioner comments? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, could you please post the vote?
Absolutely.
And it will appear publicly? Thank you, Commissioners. Vice Chairman Kennedy?
That concludes business tonight for Public Safety and Transportation.
Thank you, sir. Standing Committee, General Government, Commissioner Phil Duckham, Commissioner Duckham.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, we have one item of business.
Please speak into your microphone, Commissioner Duckham.
We have one item of business, that would be a resolution 07-21.16 honoring, oh, wait a minute, wrong committee.
That's not you, Phil.
Computer issue, sir.
That's okay.
Second is coming around. Okay, our item of business tonight looks more familiar. It would be appointments. We have one appointment tonight that would be to the Upper Grand River Watershed Alliance, the term expires 5/22, current member is Todd Zeller, the applicant was Todd Zeller, and our committee recommended Todd Zeller.
I make a motion to approve Todd Zeller.
I have a motion and support. Clarification for the Board of Commissioners and the audience, so you're aware, the reason why this expires in 5/22 is they are attempting to establish a staggered board, so that way they're not having to replace everybody all at once. So Mr. Zeller has agreed to an appointment this year, and then also, if he decides to stay or let his seat be open, that's the reason for this. Any other nominations from the floor? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, duly carried. Commissioner Duckham?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, that's all the business we have to tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Standing Committee, Human Services chaired by Commissioner Pulaski, Commissioner Pulaski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, we have no items requiring commission action this evening.
Thank you. We've arrived at unfinished business, is there any unfinished business to come before the board? Seeing or hearing any, at this time, we've arrived at new business, will we receive a Michigan Association of Counties update? Steve Curry, Mr. Curry, would you step to the microphone?
Great, thank you for having me today, Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Steve Curry, I'm the Executive Director of the Michigan Association of Counties, appreciate the opportunity to give you a brief update today. I do have a presentation I'm going to run through, please feel free to interrupt me or wait till the end with any questions you may have. Just to give you a little background on MAC, for those, whoops, for those of you that are not familiar with our organization, we're made up by 16 members, all county commissioners, two seats from each of our regions are elected, we typically meet at least four times a year, we have two conferences, which I'll talk about later, and then we meet two other times a year, and when we do have openings on our board, they're typically held at our annual conference, which is typically in August and September. This is the current MAC leadership, Veronica Kleinfeld is the MAC president, she's from Macomb County, Phil Kuyers is the first vice president, he's from Ottawa County, and Stan Ponstein is the second vice president, and he is from Kent County. So what is the purpose of MAC? Of course, number one on the list is advocacy, we definitely look at that as a team effort, we're your voice in Lansing, but it's always helpful when you're echoing what we're saying in Lansing back here, when our legislators are back in their districts. We also provide various educational opportunities, we have two conferences that we typically do each year, we also do what we call regional summits, which are currently going on right now, and I'll talk about those in a little bit, and we also provide various other webinar and online training opportunities through our organization. And then finally, services, we have a variety of services that are provided through our organization that many counties take advantage of, and your county does as well. So let's talk first, before we get into state legislative issues, of course, American Rescue Plan is a topic of conversation everywhere right now, an incredible investment in county government across the country to Michigan, and it's about $1.9 billion, coming to counties, direct funding from the federal government, which we had some CARES Act funding that went direct to counties, this round of federal government investment came to every county in the country. Obviously, it's related to COVID-related expenses, there's various calculations for some revenue loss calculations, which I'm sure Mike's working on to try to figure out, and then, what we're working with the state is, is that we've actually asked, suggested to them about $3.9 billion of their dollars, how to put those dollars up as available for potential match opportunities that local governments such as counties, cities, and townships could take advantage of, specifically for the reason, if you look at what some of the smaller townships are getting, they're just not getting that much money to really do anything with, so it makes sense to put together a match program that various locals could take advantage of with the state, to make sure those dollars go as far as possible, whether it be for broadband, various other infrastructure opportunities that you could invest in, whatever the case may be, but it's a long list that we gave the state in cooperation with our friends at the Michigan Municipal League, and it was received very well, and legislators are actually receiving it very well, so stay tuned for more information on that. So these are some of the MAC priorities this year, we'll be working on this legislative session, I'll talk about each of these individually in various slides. Four-year county commissioner terms, this is something we've been working on for a few sessions, currently, the bills are bipartisan sponsored, bills 242 and 245, they would elect four-year county commissioners terms in 2024, the bill has passed out of the Senate 32 to four, and now sits in House Committee, it sits in the House Local Government Committee, which is chaired by Julie Calley, which is a former county commissioner from Ionia County. Incidentally, last session, we did get this legislation passed out of her committee in the House, so we are expecting to get this out of the House this fall. Court funding, something that was talked about a lot when the Trial Court Funding Commission came out with various recommendations, then COVID hit, and a lot of that stuff got put on the back burner, we were happy to ensure that those court fees could continue to be charged to ensure our courts are properly funded until some of these reforms could be enacted. Some of the reforms include creating a general fund for these fees and making sure that they're dispersed based on caseload, also, creating a state-funded case management system, making sure everyone's using the same sort of IT system instead of piecemealed across the state to make sure everyone's on the same page. So local government finance reform, this is a topic that's got quite a different, quite a bunch of different moving parts. Number one on the list is to kind of stabilize revenue sharing, as you folks may know, county revenue sharing dollars are statutorily appropriated each and every year, what that means is that the legislature can appropriate that away if they chose to. What that means is that the legislature can appropriate that away if they chose to. They could get rid of all of it if they wanted to. Prior to the past five or six years, we would see twenty percent cuts to county revenue sharing dollars. Thankfully, for the past six years, we've seen two percent increases to county revenue sharing dollars. What we're looking to do is start a trust fund that would essentially put it into a lockbox so that the legislature couldn't raid it every year and would provide some stable funding for county governments. When we talk mandated services, we want to make sure those are funded. We've seen some examples of that when you look at the Raise the Age Bill, which I'll talk about in a minute. But any sort of new mandated services, we want to make sure that those, there are sufficient revenue streams for those, any other, any other new mandated services. We're looking at some, some of the issues that have happened due to COVID, especially like in some of our more tourist areas in the U.P. They've seen a huge influx of people visiting their areas and they don't have the, the support of, or the infrastructure, and I mean infrastructure, I don't necessarily mean roads and bridges, but the capacity of their sheriff's departments or their, or their EMS to handle all these people. So the tour, what we're proposing and Senator, Representative Kambenzi has proposed is a reinvestment exercise task for, for counties to, 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 to put on beds at the hotels, motels, Airbnbs. So it'd be about a three percent capped rate, tax rate that could go on and would be reserved for public safety purposes. When we look at the foreclosure issue that happened a few, well, the court case was a few years ago. The legislation passed, I believe, last year or earlier this year. It obviously caused some issues with county revolving funds. However, back in the late nineties, there was an opportunity for counties to opt out of being that forecloser unit and make the state that foreclosure unit. We are working to reopen that up so that counties could take that off their plate and make the state the foreclosing unit for foreclosed properties. And then exempting special millages from tax, yeah.
Go back to that state foreclosure. The issue that, the reason why the locals ended up with that foreclosure ruling was that the state wasn't maintaining the properties. So the issue would be make sure that the state, there's some type of switch there to make the states follow through and take care of properties and then make available for redevelopment also. Because we had literally a court case to get a piece of property from the state, from the DNR, which had reverted to them is where they were going with it, to get it so we could begin the property development. So you're gonna, while the pathway may be safe to go to the state, it's probably not the best location because they have a tendency to ignore local governments when it comes to development.
Yeah, and I agree with everything you're saying and it's something we'll definitely take into consideration. I think we're more looking at it from the standpoint of costing you more if you're the foreclosure unit and not wanting that, that financial burden to be on the county's books. What's that? Kinda, yes, yes. And then exempting special millages from tax capture, this is something we've talked about for a while. We believe that any special millages that are voted on at the local level should go for that purpose, shouldn't be siphoned off for any sort of DDA or TIF or things like that. So property tax exemptions, this is something we consistently fight in Lansing. We would like a moratorium on those. Some examples, why maybe good examples, but they are voted at the state level and do affect the, the local level. The veterans' property tax exemption, we're constantly fighting commercial property tax exemptions, non-charitable PPT exemptions. While we definitely support our veterans and support some of these things as far as economic development, we feel like if the state wants to vote on it, then they should be paying back the counties for those exemptions in some way, shape, or form. There's a proposal out there by Representative Bo LaFave that would actually pay back that veterans' property tax exemption back to locals through the form of pill payments, through your pill payments. Your pill payment would go up to cover that property tax exemption loss. And while we may not be sure if that's the best way to do it, we do like the concept of making, of some way reimbursing locals for those losses. Human services, this covers a couple of different areas as well. First, when you look at the seventeen-year-olds moving out of the adult system and the juvenile system, when that legislation was passed, our concern was making sure any increased costs were going to be paid by the state. Those, that change is due to happen October first and that is being covered by the state at this point. Again, something we'll have to consistently go fight, but we will want to make sure the state is gonna follow statute on that and cover those increased costs. There's also the County Veterans Service Fund. That fund is a fund that's funded about four million dollars a year. Each county gets a base amount of about fifty thousand dollars and the rest is distributed by population. There was a caveat to that legislation when it was passed that you had to maintain your funding level, your average funding level over previous few years to get access to that grant. However, due to COVID, that was difficult to meet, so we are seeking a one-year exemption on that so every county would be able to get those veterans' funds. And then we do have a couple of different mental health bills that have been introduced, packages. Senator Shirkey has introduced his package of bills, which we do have concerns with. We're following the lead of our friends at Community Mental Health. This kind of looks like it did a few years ago when Lieutenant Colonel Brian, Brian Calley was leading a charge up. It kind of looks like it's moving more to a privatized system rather than a local control county-focused system. And then Representative Whiteford has, has her own package of bills that look nothing like Senator Shirkey's. Basically, it would create a state entity, administrative entity to kind of run that. We feel a little bit better on that, but we have concerns about that as well. And we are at the table on both, with both Senator Shirkey and Representative Whiteford on making sure our concerns are heard and seeing if we can get something that we all agree on. So nine one one, so the Emergency 911 Service Enabling Act is due to expire at the end of this year. The bill that is bill number, let me get it here, is fifty twenty-six, which was introduced by Representative Calley, would, would extend the authorization until December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-seven. And it would ensure that the fees are on target with projected costs of the statewide implementation of the next gen nine one one. That's the new level of nine one one services out there. It would increase the prepaid charge, service charge from five to six and a half percent. Postpaid fees are proposed increase from five to seven percent. And additionally, there's a provision to trigger a fee rollback process if more revenue is generated than needed. So that is up in committee. We do support this bill through our Judiciary Committee. We want to make sure that that next gen nine one one is properly funded and that act going away would impede that. And then, of course, infrastructure is something that we'll always talk about and that definition of infrastructure seems to be expanding more and more when you start talking about broadband, PFAS, you know, making sure there's safe drinking water, pipes under the ground for drinking water. So we do support the governor's budget recommendations. You can kind of see those listed there. And of course, some of that ARP funding can be used for some infrastructure improvements. So that's kind of the legislative stuff I wanted to cover. We do have policy committees. It was called Representative, Commissioner Poliskey sits in our Health and Human Services Committee. I know she's, he's made it, it's been difficult for him to attend, but we do appreciate that support. If you would like to participate in any of our committees, long before COVID, we had Zoom for these committees so you didn't have to come to Lansing. I know it's a short drive, but we'd love to have you participate remotely or in person. This is when they meet. These are where our platforms are made, where we get our marching orders for our staff to go around and work with the legislature on a lot of these issues. We do have a MAC PAC, a smaller PAC, but it is a PAC that we use to support the thirty-one former county commissioners in the legislature. We also use it for leadership purposes as well. We'd love to have you participate if you're able to. We'll, we'll take any, any money that you can feel comfortable donating. This is your Legislative Affairs Team. Deana Boswitz, our Director of Government Affairs. She's been with our association about ten, eleven years now. I'm sure you've seen her face, heard her speak. Very knowledgeable on tax issues, finance issues, general government issues. That's what she primarily handles. Megan Kait Corian handles our Health and Human Services and Judiciary issues. And Hannah Sweeney is the newest member of our team and she, team and she's Government Affairs Assistant. And she handles kind of making sure all our committees are run properly. And if you ever do have a question and don't know where to go, you can reach out to Hannah and she'll point you in the right direction. I mentioned our conferences earlier and our regional summits. Our regional summits are going on right now. Incidentally, there's one this Thursday in Frankenmuth, then on Monday in Escanaba, and then following that, next Thursday in Gaylord. And then our annual conference is coming up, September twenty-sixth through twenty-eighth. It'll be up on Mackinac Island. It'll be our first in-person meeting in probably a year and a half. So I know folks are really excited about it. Registrations are up. People are excited to come up and see everyone in person again. These are communication tools. Hopefully, you're taking advantage of these. We try to provide various ways of keeping you informed. We have a weekly legislative update. We have a Facebook, Twitter. We do a podcast every week, Instagram. Part of my job is going out and I try to visit about forty county board meetings a year under normal circumstances. That's been obviously a little more difficult, but that's one of the things I do. We just want to make sure you guys have all the information you need to be able to do your jobs well. And that's my last slide, so I'd be happy to answer any other questions that I may not have answered.
Steve, how you doing?
Good, good to see you.
Good to see you as well. I did not even recognize you, man. I love to hear first and foremost.
That's COVID cut, sorry.
That's okay. I like it. I like it. He was in disguise. I said, I don't know if that's the attorney. And then I said, no, that's Steve. So it's good to see him first and foremost. Steve, I thank you for the report. The only thing that I would say, and I would be remiss if I didn't take the opportunity to just share this with you at this time, is that as the Director of MAC, one, I appreciate the work that you do. I think both Deana and, I can't remember the other young lady's name. Megan are wonderful, extremely knowledgeable individuals that you have working for you. So I'm sure the other addition is probably just as powerful as those two. I've always enjoyed being a part of MAC. I'm not sure what my fate is past December, but again, while I have the opportunity to share this with you, I would be remiss if I didn't. The one thing that I would share with you outside of everything that you reported is that I would just ask that as the Director of that organization, that you somehow think about ways that you can diversify the way MAC looks. Everything from the staff to the Board of Directors should be looked at in some way that you can diversify. And I know the board is voted on by the members, right? So I know that that's something that you don't have any control of, but your staff you do. So that would just be my one request. I love MAC. I think they're a wonderful organization that provides excellent advocacy for county commissioners and excellent information for county commissioners who need additional information. So that would just be my one piece. While I have the opportunity to say it, because I'm not planning on losing this race that I'm in, so I don't know if I'll have another opportunity to share that with you.
Well, thank you. Appreciate that feedback.
Thank you, everything.
Any other commissioners? Commissioner Poliskey.
Thank you. Thanks, Steve, for the presentation. And the reference to some more flexibility and revenue items for counties is, is true. Counties have, and local units of government have less flexibility and they probably need to do what they need to do. And with respect to county revenue sharing, I know that since two thousand and eleven, the General Government Appropriations Subcommittee Chairs made sure the county's got the full amount. So it's been ten years. I just want to make sure we're clear on that point. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Commissioner Williams.
Good evening. So since I've been on the board, we've received one or two items where then became mandated funding for us. Do you see any others coming down the pike?
No, not right now. We haven't heard much of mandated, like, services or?
Manded services.
Yeah, nothing that we've seen that's really egregious at this point. And even if it wasn't, it's such, it's something that we would fight vigorously at this point, unless there's a funding mechanism to, to support it. So nothing at this point that we see as a mandated function outside of what you're doing now that would be on your plate.
So do you, with the mandated services that we provide thus far, do you see any future of it becoming fully state-funded at all?
You know, there's, you know, if you look at the Indian Defense Commission that was recently created, there's, there's always been discussions about should that be a state-run system? Based, because, you know, you get discrepancies at the local level. Proper funding is difficult at the local level. So I would say if there was one, it would be possibly that one.
That's one that does come to mind. I personally am a fan of the program, but I am concerned about the longevity of such programs with them being mandated funding. So if there's ways where we can find state dollars so it could be a hundred percent funded by the state, I think would help with the longevity of the program. So that was one program that I, that did come to mind.
Yep.
Thank you. I have nothing further, Mr. Chair.
Any other commissioner comments? Seeing none, we thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. Arrived at the second opportunity for public comment. You have two minutes to address the board. You may only address the board once. Under this public comment, the public comment opportunity may not be yielded to others at this time and the board will not debate nor answer questions. Anyone like to address us a second time per public comment? Second public comment, second public comment is now closed. Commissioner comments? Commissioner Kennedy.
I'd just like to ask the public and fellow commissioners and staff to please keep the families of the three young men out there in Michigan Center that, or they were from Michigan Center that lost their lives. They were a very important part of the community, young men that had a bright, bright future. And it's, it's sad to see people go that fast. But in light of all that, there's two, there's still two young men that are fighting for their lives in the hospital and from carbon monoxide poisoning is what happened to the five of them. And so I'm sure their families would appreciate the prayers. So I just want to point that out and let everybody know that I'm thinking about them. I'm sure everyone else out here is too. Thank you.
Commissioner Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted just to take a moment to publicly share my condolences with the Shotwell family as that family has lost such a pillar member, not just to that family, but our county has lost a pillar. And so we want to, again, just share our condolences. And if there's anything that I personally can do during this time, please let me know. I have nothing further, Mr. Chair.
Any other commissioner comments? Commissioner Mahoney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have one question directed to the administrator. Mr. Administrator, I'd just like to publicly request for some additional information on the dollars as far as the amount that we'll receive in the American Rescue Plan and any ideas on what we plan to use those funds for would be phenomenal.
Yeah, we, we've been working on that diligently. We have a committee that's been working through the legislation and trying to understand what's legal, what's not legal, what's defensible down the road, because we would hate to be audited and have to pay it back. We anticipate our next meeting in August of presenting, the presentation to the board on what we are recommending at this time. And ultimately, it'll be up to the county commissioners to vote and make a determination of how we spend those dollars.
Follow-up question, Mr. Chair. I'm curious, two, two questions. One, what is the dollar amount that we're gonna receive? Again, I'm curious, the dollar amount.
It is almost thirty-two million, just shy of that. Do you remember the exact number, Christopher? Yeah, it's thirty-one and some change, but it's just.
Okay, that's close enough.
We received fifteen million plus this first year.
Second question is, who's that committee comprised of?
Well, Christopher, Christopher is the chair of that committee. Why don't you fill us in on your?
Sure. The committee is comprised of myself, Assistant County Administrator Deborah Kabitski, Finance Director Cecilia, and Rick Shealy, Facilities Director, and Michelle McClish for my team.
Okay, just a follow-up comment. I would just like to ask for this committee to remember that the city of Jackson is also a part of the county and should be thought about in whatever projects should also directly impact and affect the citizens of the city of Jackson as well.
Any other commissioner comments? Commissioner Bear.
The monies that the county is receiving that we're discussing here, did the city not get their own allocation?
They did. They received, I believe, just a little more than we did.
Okay. I think county funds should stay county funds and city funds should stay city funds.
I, I, I think that this is a debatable item we can discuss later. I agree with Commissioner Mahoney. The city is inside Jackson County. And if we are responsible leaders, we're looking at the best possible way to distribute these funds to affect all of one hundred and sixty-one thousand taxpayers in Jackson County, not just a select few. And I believe Mr. Overton's committee has looked at it that way. Any other commissioner comments? Entertained a motion in accordance with MCL fifteen point two six eight as a personnel matter to be. Entertained a motion in accordance with MCL 15.268 as a personnel matter to be discussed. So move. A motion in support. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Baer? Excuse me, Commissioner Walls?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Duckham?
Yes.
Mr. Polisick?
Yes.
Commissioner Mahoney? Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Snell?
Yes.
Chairman Shotwell?
Yes.
Six-four, sir?
Yes.
If you would be so kind, Amanda, let the record reflect that it was at the request of the employee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would propose that Administrator Overton, you receive a 3% pay increase.
Port.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Walls?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Duckham?
Yes.
Commissioner Polisick?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Snell?
Yes.
Commissioner Baer?
Yes.
Chairman Shotwell?
Yes.
And MS.